Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Aurora Grande. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 at six o'clock. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, this evening Chair Roof is absent. Vice Chair Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Here.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Here.
And Commissioner Worthy?
Here.
This all stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have a large agenda today. Do you, any agenda review requests from fellow commissioners? Very good. Next item is number five, the community comment and suggestion period. This public comment period is an invitation to members of the community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters that are not scheduled on tonight's agenda. Comments should be limited to those matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and members of the public may provide public comment in person or remotely by registering and joining the Zoom meetings that are utilized by the city. And if you're on Zoom and want to participate, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to provide public comment. Our attendance is light. Is there someone on the public here in attendance who want to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing there are none, do we have anybody on Zoom that is interested in speaking?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Vice Chair, we have no raised hands.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'm going to close the community comment period for this evening, and we will move Next time it's written communications, are there's any correspondence or supplemental information for the commission tonight that was received late enough for us to receive it at this time?
None this evening.
Very good. Thank you. One item on the consent agendas, the approval of the minutes of our October 7th regular meeting. I'll invite a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 7th meeting.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meetings of the October 7th Planning Commission meeting. We have a roll call on this item, please.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Worthy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin?
Very good. We have no public hearing items tonight. We do have one public hearing item. It is a consideration of a pre-application for establishment of an educational institution at 1690 East Grand. And I went online, is it 1690 or is the address 1650?
Sixty-nine.
Ninety? There was someplace I saw 1650, so it's my error, not the first, but probably the last. Just for the community's information, this is a pre-application. I'm going to call it a hearing. There's no decisions being made tonight by the Planning Commission. There's an opportunity for the commission to hear the staff presentation and to hear from the applicant and just to have a discussion on issues arising from this particular, this particular project. But no decisions in itself will be made tonight. People from the public that want to come in through Zoom will be given an opportunity, you know, later to participate. With that, I'm going to request the staff presentation on this item.
Thanks, Vice Chair Martin. We're just getting settled here. Sorry, we're trying to get the presentation available on the screen, so just give us one second. Thanks for your patience. Good evening, members of Planning Commission, members of the public. I am Andrew Perez, the city's planning manager, here this evening to present the staff report and facilitate our discussion about this pre-application. So beginning with kind of a brief description of the project as it's conceptualized at this moment. As you may or may not know, Questa has been exploring the city and South County for a new location to accommodate some new classrooms. Currently, they do offer classes at Aurora Grande High School from facilities that they lease from the school district. As recent as two years ago, we did have a pre-application discussion with the city council to discuss a potential facility at the Five Cities Center where the former Pier One store was located. But we're back here today because Questa has identified a new potential location for a new South County facility at 1690 East Grand Avenue. The current concept would include up to five student classrooms, a study hall or student lounge, some administrative offices, as well as a daycare that would serve both the students attending the facility and the public at large. For permitting purposes, this facility would be classified as a specialized education Looking at the proposed use, it doesn't operate like a traditional college campus by any means. Obviously, it's much smaller and would serve a smaller population. It's anticipated that the students that would be attending classes here would not be spending as much time at this facility as they would at traditional campus, and the number of amenities and resources would be much less than what you'd expect at the home campus in San Luis Obispo. So looking at the project site, that righted building is approximately 16,250 square feet and is located in the Gateway Mixed-Use Zoning District. Surrounding development includes the church property immediately adjacent to the north and commercial development to the west across Oak Park Boulevard, south across East Grand, and immediately adjacent to the east. Surely, the purpose of tonight's pre-application discussion is truly an opportunity for the applicant to receive feedback from both the Planning Commission and the general public if they're interested in the project. It's really just informative discussion, and as Vice Chair Martin mentioned, no formal action will be taken by the Planning Commission this evening. The municipal code states the purpose of the Gateway Mixed-Use Zone as, you know, to provide areas for a combination of multiple non-residential and residential land uses with an emphasis on pedestrian-oriented uses on ground floors that abut East Grand Avenue. Specialized schools would be allowed in this zone with the approval of a conditional use This property has a mixed-use general plan land use designation. Therefore, you know, any development that happens here would need to adhere to the objectives and be compliant with the policies for mixed uses that are laid out in the general plan. For example, land use policy 5-1 encourages uses that support the greater community and would reduce external trips outside of the city for the same or similar services. So in this case, by bringing in, you know, college coursework offered in the city, that could reduce trips to either San Luis Obispo for students traveling to Questa's, you know, main campus, or potentially south of Santa Maria to attend classes at Allen Hancock. Policies 5.3 and 5.9, the land use element support projects in mixed-use areas that are easily served by walking, biking, or public transit. While no residences, you know, abut the project site, there are, you know, many households within a half mile to a mile that we can expect potential students to walk or bike to this facility. Additionally, there is a bus stop a couple hundred feet just to the east of the site that provides service every hour throughout the day. So another option for people that would be attending the site. Looking at site access, there are two driveways that provide direct access to the site, one on East Grand and one on Oak Park Boulevard. There's an additional driveway that can access the site from North Cortland if the motors were to traverse the bank parking lot. Turning movements from both the site driveways restrict turning movements to right-in and right-out only, so maybe something to consider in our comments and something staff would definitely look at if a formal application were to come forward. And those two driveways do provide access directly to the 83 spaces in the existing parking lot that serve this building. So of course, the one aspect of projects that gets a lot of attention is parking. Municipal Code Chapter 1656 establishes parking rates for various uses, and this table from your staff report kind of breaks down the parking requirement for the use as it's conceptualized right now. So that includes the five classrooms, some administrative offices, the student lounge, and the childcare facility. So added up, the parking requirement is 47 spaces. And while the parking lot satisfies this number and this requirement, anticipated demand is likely to exceed what's required by the municipal code. The applicant has indicated that maybe up to 200 students could be on-site at any one time once the facility's operating at its maximum capacity. But through the CUP process, there is an opportunity to condition the project to impose conditions that could alleviate demand on parking. Some examples include staggering the start times of classes, limiting the number of classes at one time, things of that nature, and staff would definitely work with the applicant to ensure that any conditions are realistic and wouldn't, you know, restrict the use to be not as effective as it could be. So as I mentioned previously, really, tonight, the pre-application discussion is an opportunity for the Planning Commission and public to provide feedback for the applicant. The applicant would then use this information to determine whether to submit an application for the entitlement, or if they've already made that decision, opportunity to refine it, you know, in response to the comments heard tonight. If and when a formal application is submitted, that application would be considered by the staff advisory committee and the architectural review committee, both of which would make a recommendation to the Planning Commission, who would ultimately be the deciding body for the CUP. In this case, city council would only consider the application on appeal, so just something to keep in mind. And in conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission receive public comment, provide direction to the applicant regarding a potential application to establish a specialized education school at the subject address. Be happy to answer any questions, and we do have the applicant present as well.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Does the commission have questions for staff at this time before we invite the applicant to come up? So the applicant here would like to make a brief presentation, comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. You know, we're really excited for the opportunity to serve our students down in the south portion of the county, recognizing that it can be difficult to get, to get up to where our slow campuses or our Paso Robles campuses during the day. Our intent is to work closely with the community, find out what programming would be effective here, what folks actually want. We have some kind of general ideas, but, you know, our intent is to engage with the community, find out what will actually serve their needs best, and then bring that here.
Great, thank you. Do you mind introducing yourselves? Just so we know.
You don't know me? No, I'm sorry, my name is Todd Hampton. I'm the Vice President of Administrative Services for Questa.
Very good. Thank you very much. Questions for the applicant? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you for coming. Can you explain for us what services are currently being offered at the facilities you lease from LMUSD and what would differ, if anything, with this space instead, other than a potentially earlier start time, because I know you are limited at the current facility?
We run a handful of classes, and I'm sorry I don't have the list in front of me, but, you know, we run a handful of classes starting at 4:00 PM at Aurora Grande High School. We were working with LMUSD, potentially a spot down in Napomo as well, but that spot doesn't look like it's going to work out for us right now. They ran into some zoning concerns, as you may well be aware. So, yeah, realistically, the biggest thing we're going to bring is an earlier start time and then an opportunity for us to really engage a little bit better with the public. You know, we can only do so much in a handful of spaces that are decided on by the other
When does your lease with the facility at AG High expire? Is there a date?
It's annual.
Okay. And then there is that church to the north. Have you had any conversations with them or gotten any feedback? I was just curious.
I haven't yet. My intent is to engage with them based on the, you know, kind of the direction this meeting goes tonight, but my intent would be to engage with them, maybe look at, for example, a co-parking agreement or something that would help us to relieve some of the potential overuse, considering most churches aren't, aren't going to be there when we are, and we're not going to be there when the church is for the most part. I think there might be an opportunity for us to partner.
Wonderful. And then just another quick question. What, what is the enrollment currently like for what you are able to offer? Because I know you're saying at max maybe 200 students at the newer facility if you were to go that route. What are you currently serving?
Down here, nowhere, nowhere near that many. You know, what we're serving down here, the people we're serving down here primarily actually are our high school students, and what we find is that even those high school students who are enrolled in our dual enrollment programs that are taking place aren't necessarily completing into Questa, right? They're, they're finding that the distance isn't amenable to them. So actually, we're losing some of our students down to Allen Hancock College now, so we're hoping that we can help to retain some of those. And, you know, depending on what, again, what the desire of the community is, maybe it's folks that are dropping their kids off for school and have a couple of hours and want to take advantage of an opportunity to take a class. It will be likely we'll start with some of that, you know, what do you call it, the general ed, you know, English and math and those things that everyone needs to take regardless in hopes that we can maybe alleviate some of the traffic heading up.
Got it. Actually, I think that that answered a few of my more pertinent questions. I'm sure I have overlapped some other commissioner questions.
You may have more, okay. Jared, do you have questions for the applicant?
Questions for now are, so I guess is the intent for this to replace or to supplement the, the current situation in AG High?
Right now, the intent is to replace.
To replace. I think that's comments or later, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Then I think that's really the only questions I have that you can answer.
Okay. Mr. Buchanan?
Yes. Excuse me. Childcare services was mentioned as potentially being provided here to the students and public at large. Are you providing childcare at other locations now? And how is that going? And is this serving a larger public or just students?
For the most part, it's students right now. We are providing it at other campuses. Whether or not that happens, we're not certain. We wanted to kind of cast a net, you know, and see what will happen. That's a possibility, though.
Sure. Yeah, that's the only question I had. Thanks.
Sure thing. I have a question on, around zoning. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit curious that the determination has been that this is more of a specialized school than a regular school. Certainly understand that the numbers and the nature of it are very, very small, but assuming that some, you know, repairs and reconstruction and creation of classrooms and, you know, the potential for a childcare facility, are you going to be required to meet the state DSA architectural standards and stuff?
Yes, anything we do has to run through DSA.
And running through DSA?
There, there are authoritative bodies.
Correct. So at that point, if there's, you know, building permits and things of that nature, they will not be handled through the city through the regular zoning and things of that nature? They'll be handled through the state in Sacramento or LA, whatever the state office is that handles architectural permit.
It is LA, but yes.
Okay. I, I, I guess for me, then it, that almost comes back to the state, the architect and the state agency that's in charge of this makes this look much more like a public facility rather than just a specialized classroom. And so I'm just, I want to make sure that we as a community and the people, and the college recognizes this, that we're making a decision placing, in my mind, a public school into the mixed-use, mixed-used area, and in my mind, we're not really putting in a specialized school and that, recognizing that this is 200 students, but it's still going to have a big sign out front that says "Questa College" on it.
It is.
And with a Questa College and a classroom there, there, it's going to be, from a construction standpoint and a school and the appearance, it's going to be meeting all those other state standards that every other public school between, you know, kindergarten and community college, you know, meets throughout the state.
Correct. So the DSA's purview really is three things, right? It's accessibility, so we have to meet the accessibility rules, but basically under ADA, and then they have some special requirements. It's fire and life safety, and it's structural.
Right.
So as long as we're hitting those, that's really their purview.
Okay. I think that's really the big focus on my questions at this point. Are there people here that would like to speak? Oh, you, you have another? Sure, go ahead.
Just more to you guys here on this one. And here, anything externally to the building still comes through architectural and us, correct? Based, based on the application?
Yeah.
So there'd be some level of oversight from the city still?
If the project proceeds under Gateway Mixed-Use? Yeah. You know, that's, I'm not really sure. So if there are changes to the parking lot, would that be under the purview of the city because of the reconstruction aspect of it is being handled through DSA, that's not being handled through the building department here in the city?
Brian Pejati, Community Development Director. I believe that things that are related to such things as drainage, public improvements, those fall under the city's purview. So there will be permits associated with, all the structural permits would likely go through DSA. So that's a little bit, that's, that's how the, the proposed gym behind Aurora Grande High School has been processed. City is involved with, again, drainage improvements and stormwater and as well as, you know, sidewalk improvements.
Yeah, there's a city, is it a city-owned street that?
Correct.
That bisects or separates the new gym from the existing school side?
Yes.
Okay. That provides some clarification. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay, then I think at this point, we will open it to the public for, thank you, Vera, to the public for comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment on this project? Seeing none, is there anyone in the Zoom world out there that would like to participate tonight?
If anybody on Zoom would like to comment regarding this item, please raise your hand at this time. Vice Chair, we have no raised hands.
Very good. I'll bring it back then for general comments, I guess, is just pretty light, you know, level of public participation, but Jared, would you like to speak first?
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited. I think it's a cool project. I think the city of AG be lucky to have an expanded campus here, serving not just us, but, but Five Cities really in general. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of what's been shared tonight would maybe be the concerns I think the community would want to address. I think 200 students, you assume some staff, some switchover, I could see some of the neighbors getting concerned with ingress egress. If you are coming up over Oak Park from the freeway, getting in, does that cause people to have to go through the intersection around? Some of those things I personally think are very solvable, but I could see if it were to come back to us as a formal application, that, that being something that the community would want addressed. And then, yeah, I mean, Canada, I don't really feel like there are a whole lot of drawbacks to it. I think parking and traffic with, with creative solutions can, can very easily be solved, in my opinion, but very excited for it. Thank you.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah, only comments are that I think this serves a real need here, so I'm excited to see this brought forward or potentially brought forward. Excited for, you know, potential childcare here, whether it's just for students or for the greater public, that's also a tremendous need in the community, so it's exciting that we're even talking about that. I don't see parking being an issue here. There's lots of parking on the side already. I wouldn't expect to impose any other conditions of approval related to parking here. That's just my initial feedback. But, yeah, overall, I think it looks like a great project.
Great, thank you. Ms. Sakerson?
Yeah, I'm going to echo my fellow commissioners regarding some of the concerns, whether it's like in briefly addressed, safety, that's all going to have to come through the staff advisory committee anyway, how the building looks, again, architectural review. I feel like there are a lot of steps in place that will cover our bases, so I'm definitely not concerned about that. I also don't think that parking will necessarily be an issue, but like you said, even having a conversation with the church about, you know, shared parking times, there are so many different solutions that if you get creative enough, they can be resolved, like Commissioner Worthy said. I love that you're trying to address losing students to other schools, to other areas. Every time a parent of a student has to drive out of town to do something like to take them to a class, or as an adult student has to go in and out, that there's a real cost associated, whether it's a missed opportunity or the cost of time, gas, all of that. So I think that would alleviate some things. I also think that the study, I'm going to quote here, "The study influx of students and faculty to support other existing restaurants and businesses." There is a real value to that. That was one of the first things that, that popped in mind for me as a community member and business owner, like the more bodies that are in those seats, in that building on a day-to-day basis, on a regular basis, it'll support all the little restaurants and the convenience stores and even the grocery stores. And I think it would help improve walkability, just seeing more people out and about. I think it's a good thing, so I'm excited. Thank you for potentially bringing this forth.
I too am, you know, interested in seeing this project progress. The two comments that I would make is, one, let's get this done correctly, if, whether there are construction-related issues or zoning-related issues. From, for my mind and my interpretation, I think some of this needs to really be clarified. The other thing is that I would hope that Questa continues in its, in its efforts to really reach out. I realize this is a pre-application. I didn't, certainly wasn't aware, I knew that Questa had been seeking space up in that other shopping center and, you know, that Aurora Grande was on their radar for an expanded classroom. But I'm disappointed, not in, in Questa directly, but I'm disappointed that there's not more interest and engagement from the community about something that's going to make a, it's a real difference, you know, removing a retail anchor that's at the, you know, entrance and gateway to our community. and gateway to our community. We have two other large vacant spaces in Roya Grande in addition to this one, so I think, you know, this kind of use is not something that I find problematic. I just want to kind of get it done right, and I encourage the community to become way more engaged, and hopefully Questa can make additional efforts to see that there's more than four planning commissioners, you know, that are engaged in a conversation and helping you figure out whether this is the right location and the right decision, you know, for Questa College at this time. I agree, I don't think parking, parking's going to become an issue if, in fact, there's 150, 200 students. I think that those issues can be, you know, addressed, you know, through agreements with some of the neighboring, you know, properties. I think also if we're planning for the future, we need to continue to emphasize the opportunities in rapid, you know, rapid transit and the bus systems and bicycling and things can, alternative types of methods of coming, you know, coming and going from a location like this. So those are my comments. We're early in the process, but, you know, keep at it. But for me, it's just, let's get this done right.
Can I piggyback on one of the things that you were saying? You touched on the concept of community outreach, and I think this is where if you as an organization are noticing and getting feedback from the enrolled students and faculty at the facilities you have, indicating that there's a need for a larger facility and more services, maybe those are the people that can come to these meetings moving forward to help echo the need so that the general public, who may or may not use these services going forward, are at least aware that their neighbors and friends are the ones that are asking for the satellite campus to exist. My child goes to AG High, and I didn't even notice that there was a Questa facility until maybe like two months ago. I was like, oh, there's a satellite office here, this is cool. So I think, I think just not knowing is probably the biggest hurdle for a lot of our citizens. So just, that was the only thing I had left.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, closing comments? Sure, Kevin? I think that's it for now. Any other comments or response at this point from the applicants?
No, just thank you so much for hearing us out.
Good luck on your quest. Didn't even think about that at the time. Didn't start out that way. Thank you very much. That closes item number nine. Item 10 is a notice of administrative items. There's one administrative item, Architectural Review on a new single-family residence up on Castillo Del Mar. Any kind of questions from commissioners on that particular item? The next item is Commission Communications. Any communications, any comments my fellow commissioners would like to make at this time? None, none, none? I don't have anything to add as well. Staff Communications?
Sure. Brian Pejati, Community Development Director. A update on our city council meeting from the 14th. We had the SB 9 ordinance on as an intro. However, two days, three days before that hearing and post-publishing of the agenda, Governor Newsom signed five bills that were associated with SB 9 and ADUs. And so it changed a lot of the language and the unit configuration in our ordinances. And so we're going to package both ADU and SB 9 ordinance backup and bring it back to the Planning Commission on the 4th of November, and then we'll be going back to city council. So look forward to that.
Thank you, Sacramento. Thank you. Any other comments from the staff for us here tonight? If not, this meeting is hereby adjourned, 6:32. Thank you very much, everybody.